The June 14th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in its essence, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie City government. Typically, our meetings are held on the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to address the council at this time, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date. That number is 949-8412. Leave your name and your phone number and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, we'll open the floor to unscheduled speakers. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. We'll start off with calling the HRA meeting to order. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes for the HRA meeting held on January 5th?
Move approval. Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is a request that we had dropped a resolution approving Amendment Three to Housing Project Agreement and authorizing execution by the Chair/Executive Director. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, members of the HRA. Yes, Amendment Three is related to our Eden Gardens development, and this type of amendment's been before you in the past. But I'm going to turn over this item to our Community Development Director, Janet Jeremiah. She's our Eden Gardens expert and the expert on this amendment, and she'll provide an overview for you. And then I will note that there is a subsequent action, if you approve this, that takes place at the council meeting on the consent agenda, so we'll talk a little bit about that as well.
All right, thank you.
Your Honor and council members, this amendment is to adjust the number of required moderate income units, and after a couple of years of marketing the property, the developer has sold seven moderate income units, and they believe it's reasonable to anticipate at least three additional sales and possibly six. They have up to 13 currently interested but have not yet closed on those additional properties. So the amendment would reduce the number of required moderate income units to 10, and it would waive the requirement, basically the look back of the repayment of property requirements for all of them, because looking at the sales, it does not seem that that's really going to be an issue, and we want to be equitable with the ones that have already closed and the ones that are going forward. Now, there's a slight modification to the one that's before you, the clarification, rather than just having 10 being the absolute number of moderate income units, we wanted to allow the flexibility if they are able to sell to additional eligible buyers. So it's a minimum of 10, but we're not putting a maximum in there. And the park dedication fee would be paid for any of the market rate units. So again, we don't know exactly how many will be moderate income and market rate, but it will only be waived on the moderate income units. And Mr. Rosso would like to provide some additional language for the motion to note the conditions regarding execution of the documents and signature of the property owners.
So, yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, the motion to adopt the resolution approving Amendment Three and execution by the Chair and Executive Director should include that it's contingent upon execution by the developer and the property owners. We have seven current property owners who need to sign consents, and the developer literally texted us moments ago to say he was fine with the agreement and would get an executed copy over to the city, but we don't have that yet. So I'd like it to be contingent upon receiving the executed agreement and the executed consents from the property owners. And then just to highlight that what is in the packet has changed slightly to accommodate the change from 10 units as the minimum number to, or 10 units as the number, to no less than 10, and we made some related changes to accommodate receiving additional moderate income units. So not substantive changes in the actions that were described, but more flexibility in obtaining the more minimum income units.
Okay. So is the current wording of Amendment Three that we have in this document, is this correct? I'm just wondering if the wording for the motion is okay.
The wording from the motion is correct with the addition of contingent upon execution by the developer and property owners.
Okay. Upon receiving the executed agreement?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Mr. Getcho or?
Just the current seven property, or all the property owners of the sort of moderate price, or?
The seven, plus there's a purchase agreement that's been signed, and so it's really-
Say, current property.
Property owners.
Okay.
Okay. What was the original number that we were looking for?
It was 20.
That's correct. The original number was 20.
So we've gone basically down to half.
A minimum of half. Hopefully, we'll get to 13, maybe plus.
And we'll pick up cash park fees on those additional, now 10, because that was part of the, not subsidy, but incentivizing that we, as a city, offered this developer.
That's correct. And I would like to note, too, that we have been successful with our goal of getting a number of these units to Eden Prairie residents and people who are employed in Eden Prairie, so that goal has been achieved as well.
Great, okay. Any questions further? Does somebody want to make the motion?
Sure. I would move to adopt the resolution approving Amendment Three to Housing Project Agreement and authorizing execution by Chair/Executive Director contingent upon execution by the developer and property owners.
Is that adequate, Mr.?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The HRA is adjourned. We're reopening the council meeting, and the first item is a donation from the Chrominga family for the Veterans Memorial. I hope I pronounced that name correctly.
I believe so. That's the same way I'm intending to pronounce it as well.
Okay.
Your Honor, council members, the Chrominga family members did attend the recent ceremony at the Veterans Memorial, and after that indicated the desire to give a donation of $1,000 towards the Veterans Memorial Fund. And so tonight's action is to accept that, and we certainly thank them for those, for that donation and the help that that will give us to care and maintain for that memorial.
Great. Is the family here tonight?
They are not.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Chrominga family for the Eden Prairie Veterans Memorial.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and I'd like to again thank the Chrominga family for that donation. That entire memorial is there because of donations from members of the Eden Prairie community and the greater Eden Prairie community, so thank you so much for that. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to add?
I have a quick report, Mayor.
Okay. Under-
Report to city manager.
Okay, anything else? All in favor of the agenda is amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, May 24th?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes for the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval. Second.
Any items to correct in those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for items A through R on the consent calendar?
Move approval of A through R on the consent calendar.
Second.
Mr. Getcho, you want to say something?
Yeah, Mayor, I would add that on the item related to the Eden Gardens on the consent agenda, that's Item C, that you're putting the same condition on that development agreement that you did on the amendment at the HRA meeting.
Accepted, yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second with that condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. First of two public hearings, then, is the Prairie View Enclave. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight's first public hearing is for a residential development project before you tonight. It is a preliminary plat for 18 single-family lots at a gross density of 1.7 units per acre. This is on 10.71 acres, again, as I mentioned, into 18 single-family home lots, one outlot and road right-of-way. The lot size range, the lot sizes range from 13,706 square feet to 22,191 square feet. As part of the development, you have the packet in front of you, this is south of Pioneer Trail on the east edge of the airport, and it also includes trail connection as well, sidewalk connection, as well as the outlot that I mentioned. The one thing that you'll note in the planning commission minutes and the submittal and the additional submittals is that through the neighborhood meeting process and the planning commission process and staff discussions within the last month, the project includes a secondary access and does not, no longer, would no longer have the cul-de-sac, and you see the update in the plan. And then also included in this is a recommendation by staff for a temporary access that would be used for construction activities to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighborhood. At their May 23rd meeting, the planning commission voted 7-0 with one abstention to approve the project with the condition that the secondary access, if feasible, be approved and explored. And it is my understanding that we have received positive verification from the county that this is possible. I think we'll need to do some final work between this first reading and second reading. As you know, this project would have to come back and be finalized in July with the second reading and a development agreement as well. And, you know, as I mentioned, originally it would have been a PUD with waivers, but that would not necessarily waivers for the length of the cul-de-sac, but that would not be the case if we're not talking about a cul-de-sac anymore, but you still have the plat. And I see that the developer is here this evening to provide any additional background information, answer any questions that you may have in addition to staff, and this is a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getcho? Mr. Getcho, I have one. Actually, maybe this is for Ms. Jeremiah. The materials are received are a little confusing because on several of these sheets, it shows cul-de-sac on pages six and 14, the, what are these here? One of them is a landscape plan, the other one is something else. It shows Surrey Street growing through Pioneer Trail, but not at the same position that it's, my understanding, has been proposed, which would be a little further west. So if we approve this, are we kind of implying that we want the Surrey Street that's on page six?
Your Honor, there are some inconsistencies, and some of the sheets do need to be updated by second reading, so we'll get all of those inconsistencies worked out by the time you see this for second reading. But with regard to the exact location of the street and whether it's the temporary or the permanent, perhaps Public Works could speak to that.
Yes, I think we're having conversations right now with Hennepin County, this being Pioneer Trail, and they have jurisdiction over any access. So in our conversations with them, they seem receptive to the idea of providing an access for this development temporarily off of Pioneer Trail with the thought that someday MAC will come in with the proposal to develop their property, and this road, under question, would then tie in with that new access for that development. But we've had positive conversations with Hennepin County. I think there's just additional design details that need to be worked out, sightlines to nail down exactly what that access would look like, and, but all indications seem to be positive that they're willing to allow some type of temporary connection.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Case.
Well, just quickly, I think it's a write-in, write-out, I'm assuming, and then, so, just so I'm understanding, if it tied in with MAC someday, it would skirt much closer than to the property that's the closest to the southwest, right, and then shoot across and then join to the west? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Right, right, right. And it would join over here, then, yeah. Got it.
All right. Does a proponent want to just stand for questions, or do you have a presentation you want to make?
I'll just stand for questions.
Okay, all right. I do have a couple of questions, then. What is the anticipated price range on these homes?
Ian Peterson with David Weekly Homes. You know, our anticipated price range is starting in the 600s and probably going close to 800.
Okay. And are you anticipating a monument sign for this development?
Originally, we were not. Now with the write-in, write-out, it's, it's still up in debate. Probably not. We're probably going to invest the money more in landscaping.
Okay.
You know, we've gone through many different alternatives, access points, write-in, write-out, future connection to Surrey, or to the MAC property, and wherever we put it, notoriously having done this for a very long time, it's going to be in the wrong location sometime in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anybody else have questions? Councilmember Case.
Not sure if it's for the developer or staff, but just looking at page five in our documents with Zone A and B, and I'm confused because there's no development in Zone A, right? So are you saying that Zone A tucked up against the, I wish we had something up on a board, but I'm assuming the big rectangle strip is all Zone B, and so that Zone A is just touch up against it, but it looks like Zone A is cutting half of House Number 15 off there, and I would think that's not legal to build in Zone A.
Madam Mayor, I can take that question. So there's various maps that are out there, and I'm assuming you're looking at something like this?
No.
On the, we're looking at-
It's number five on our packet.
And that shows the zones, the airport zones on there, so there's a Zone A and a Zone B that are indicated.
Sure. We received a letter from MAC and then this graphic, and what this graphic shows, and we shared this with the planning commission, is essentially the property outlined in red, and I can pass this around for you.
Could you pull the mic a little closer? It's really hard to hear you.
Or even be able to show this on our screen?
Oh, yeah.
Would you mind doing that?
I want to do that.
Okay, so this map came from MAC, and this outlines essentially, if we look over here at the legend, in green permitted residential areas or uses. So this is a supplement to the Zone A, Zone B maps that you are looking at and that what we use to overlay on our plan set. And so what we did at the planning commission is outline in red, southern portion of both of the properties do, are in the green area, so they do allow for permitted residential In addition, it came up at planning commission, and we just received a letter from the FAA today indicating there was a question at the planning commission. There's a white beacon that sits out in this area, and so we applied with the FAA as it relates to development close to that. It's pretty common nature, and we did receive back a letter from the FAA today indicating that we were clear for four different sites within the plat, the one being, that we were most concerned with being the closest lot, I believe it was Lot 16 on the plat, if I remember correctly, the one closest to that beacon, so.
Just a quick question. So when you're building these homes, and I mean, obviously, you're very close proximity to the airport, do you do anything different, or is the plan to do anything different with these homes in terms of soundproofing and, you know, making it so that people aren't going to be as bothered by airport noise?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, absolutely. You know, we will use a higher-rated STC window, soundproof window essentially, as well as different insulation in the attic space as it relates to sound coming through that. As it relates to the penetrations for the venting of the pipes, typically, there's nothing that you do differently. We may bend over at a 90-degree, the venting of the pipes to reduce any potential noise that may come through there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Will you be disclosing this information to potential homebuyers that they're buying a home that is in this particular zone?
Absolutely, yes. And that will get recorded with closing documents.
Is that required by the FAA?
I'm not so sure if it's required by the FAA. I believe it's required by MAC. That's something that we've done regardless, if it's a requirement or not. We want to make sure that everybody's protected in this and that everybody knows that they will be buying within a close proximity to the airport.
Well, not just close proximity, but within a designated noise zone.
Correct.
And I just want us to be sure as a city that we're protected, because I don't want residents coming in 10 years from now saying, "I can't believe you allowed them to build here." So I want to know for sure that these potential residents know that this is in this residential use allowed Zone B, or A, sorry.
Your Honor, we are double-checking with the MAC, and also, we are requiring the disclosure as part of the development agreement. We have done that with other properties, Hennepin Village included.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Case?
I did turn it so you could see it.
Okay.
It's so hard up here with just two of us for me to get your attention. I think this is for Mr. Rosso, Rick. Could you talk to us about, sorry, could you talk to us about what is allowed within Zone B, because I'm forgetting some of that, but I remember there are restrictions, so would you maybe chat about that?
Well, I did review this with the planning department before it reached this level, and first, there, the zoning ordinance, the JASB zoning ordinance that we worked so hard on, has never been adopted. So the MAC essentially put a hold on that process after the city council indicated its willingness to go through that process. The ordinance was developed and it was brought to the city council to not approve, but to indicate its acquiescence if it was ultimately approved by MAC. And they never approved it because they were concerned about some court cases that were deciding that these types of regulations could be takings of property. And so they wanted to see how those cases all filtered out before they proceeded, and for a while, we asked them, "When are you ready? Are we going to be proceeding?" Their chief legal counsel retired, and I stopped asking because it had been several years. So we're not under a requirement by ordinance to restrict, and without a requirement under ordinance, then you'd have to find some other reason to say this property wasn't appropriate for development. It would, and I'm not sure what that would be. In terms of Zone B of the airport property, they limit by number of, number of units within the acres, and I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers memorized, but I know when I was dealing with the planner, we went through that, those calculations, and that this property would meet those requirements.
Okay.
But there, in any event, those, again, are not for us to enforce, that's really for MAC to enforce if they chose to do so.
Yes, Mr. Case?
So I thought that Zone A is a federal FAA, and that Zone B came out of the state of Minnesota, maybe not regulated or mandatory, but I still thought the concept of Zone B and where it falls around the state across all of our airports is state. Is that so accurate, that the idea of it is coming out of the state, but the enforcement possibly is within each airport commission? Is that kind of what-
There's an overlap between A and B and the federal zone, so essentially, the no-build zone of the federal requirements lines up with Zone A, and the Zone B lines up with minimal, with limitations on height and density of congregation, so you wouldn't be able to put a church-
Right.
-or a gymnasium that would attract large numbers of people, and so it's based on a calculation of the average number of people per acre.
Okay, I recall that, too. As much as I respect and appreciate that little tiny map that you said came from MAC, and said everything's okay, our bigger maps are still showing Zone A fairly deliberately marked into Lot 15, making it difficult to put a house in there. And if that's true, are you saying still, since we haven't signed with the MAC on our zoning agreements, that we still have no enforcement powers on that, but they would have to? Is that, Rick, what you're saying? I mean, if indeed, let's just, work with me for a moment, let's just say this would be a problem for Lot 15. Are you still saying that this is not our enforcement issue?
Yes, I believe this is for MAC to enforce that requirement. We do not have a zoning requirement or restriction in place with respect to this, and it would be for them to take any action, and I haven't seen them do that on any piece of property.
So if they're saying to go ahead with it, then we don't have a problem with it?
Well, for-
We may not have a legal issue.
I mean, but I mean, yeah, that's what I mean.
For years, they've discouraged, going back to the tree farm, they've discouraged residential development and have issued letters saying, "We urge you to not approve this." And that's easy for them to say, because then they're not responsible for any takings claim that results from the denial of a reasonable use of the property. And so that's where I'm coming from in terms of, it's not part of our zoning to restrict it in that manner. It, I don't believe that, and so therefore, it's part of MAC's responsibility.
I, in 20 years, I don't recall a project that came before us that didn't, that was, had this much A and B in it, that didn't have all kinds of yellow flags being waved in our faces, including when we approved Grace Church, and we had someone from MAC standing right there saying, "Don't approve this." So here we have a piece of property that I don't recall ever seeing anything with A and B in it like this, and we're just supposed to approve it because we don't have any powers not to. I'm just, it's confusing to me, because we really have struggled over this for years, and this seems so contrary to what the issues have been that we've been facing in the past.
And Grace Church would be an example of a large congregation of people in one building.
That wasn't even in a zone, and they still didn't want it-
Right.
-us to build it. But, and I just throw that as an example, that they came for that, but I don't recall, and maybe Rick and Janet and others helped me, but I just don't recall us having a development project on private property come before us that, according to what was sent out to us this week, has Zone A sitting on a piece of, on one of the lots, into one of the houses drawn, and maybe not on yours, but it is on ours. And then, if I'm reading it right, is Zone B cutting across, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Am I reading it right? It's cutting across eight homes of this project? I just don't- I, I just don't, I don't know. I, I'm trying to think back since ninety-five, I just don't recall this kind of a project this close to proximity to, and dealing with these zones like this. And it's, um, you know, if you're sitting here very, I will very much defer to our attorney tonight, if you're sitting here saying, "For me to vote against this, I need grounds," which I don't have grounds, other than this feels really uncomfortable. But if you're saying it's not within our, um, legal purview, then, then I will vote for this tonight. But I'm very, very uncomfortable and I, I, I'm, I guess I'm amazed that it's, um, that we're being so rec, not, well, I don't know who's recommending, but we're being so supported in, on issues that it seems to me, I, unless I'm forgetting, that we've struggled over this, much less airport intrusion than this, and we've struggled over it in the past. And here we have this major airport intrusion and it's like, yeah, let's sign off on it. So I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm questioning.
Without, um, having an opportunity to consult with the city manager or the director of community development, if you're that uncomfortable with it, then if there's time, perhaps, uh, continuing it to the next meeting, uh, in order to fully answer those, more fully answer those questions with more specific information, I don't know.
Do we have time in our hundred and twenty, twenty days or? Problem is we're having one meeting a month here in the summer. Is that complicated, exacerbate this?
My recollection is that there is, um, a certain imminence with regard to at least the, the developer's perspective on this and, um, we would let, I would like to let him speak to the timing because I recall, uh, the efforts we made to get it on this particular city council meeting.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Case, you know, this is, this is the May ninth, or March ninth letter that was sent to the city, uh, from MAC, um, and I've highlighted here, approximately five and a half acres, um, is within the designated safety zone, but are identified as permitted uses residential areas, which allow for the improvement, expansion, and development of new residential uses.
That's pretty clear.
So, that's, that's been with the city. Attached to that was that map that I shared earlier. This is the map that, uh, that we sent in with our FAA application. And like I said, we just received this yesterday, or today, it was dated yesterday. So, we chose, this location is the highest elevation on the entire site, uh, which would impact the most, uh, with regard to the FAA beacon as well as, as development. And then we chose basically the three other corners of the site. And I can definitely hand this, um, off to you, but this is a determination of no hazard to air navigation letter, uh, for each of those four locations.
Well, if you look at the map, if you look at this drawing too, you see the houses going down, um, just, just to the S, uh, east of that on Tree Farm Road, they're clearly in that, uh, zone as well. There's a number of homes in there.
That, that letter's troubling to me because that letter seems to imply there's no hazard to aviation. In other words, you don't have buildings higher than thirty-five feet at an eight-hundred-and-ninety-foot elevation, so planes won't hit it. What about what the planes hit? I mean, that's, that's the reason we have Zones A and B is to protect houses and people on the ground. So that's my concern. I mean, I'm concerned about people that fly, no offense to anyone who flies out of flying cloud. So I'm concerned about tall buildings they might hit, but the zones are the protection for the people on the ground.
Let's both.
And so, that's my concern that, yeah, that MAC signed off saying, "Hey, you don't have any buildings higher than thirty-five feet, eight-hundred-and-ninety-foot elevation, great." What about the six, thirteen houses, whatever you built in a, in a Zone B safety zone? That's my concern. And I realize they signed off, I get that, I'm hearing that. I, I'm just thinking they signed off very egocentrically, which is fine, but we're here to represent future residents, not, not, not just their interests.
Uh, Mr. Maya. Your Honor, Councilmembers, I just wanted to answer the prior question with regard to the hundred-and-twenty day deadline is August nineteenth, so we would have the opportunity from the city's perspective to bring this back in July if that's your preference, but I know that the developer may want to speak to the timing from his perspective.
Uh, Mr. Maya, will documents that we just saw from the developer, will those be in, filed in with all the documents for this plan? Seems like we'd want to have copies of all of those.
I don't believe that that was currently going to be part of the package. I'm looking at our city attorney because I was out of the office last week. But I think we still have the opportunity certainly to add the MAC documentation into the, uh, development agreement files.
Mr. Rosso?
That's what you're asking?
Yes, yes. And i- if I could follow up a, a little, the, the state rule requirements with respect to Zone A are no building, temporary structure, et cetera. Zone B is restricted to uses, um, and again, it's based upon, they have site areas, ratio of building area to plot area, uh, the building plot area, number of square feet, and population. So depending upon the size of the site, it's limited by the population. So you, you need to make that application of it. I talked to the planner regarding this issue. And then there is specific prohibitions for churches, hospitals, schools, theaters, stadiums, hotels, motels, trailer courts, campgrounds, and other places of public or semi-public assembly.
Well, I would, um, certainly favor, um, I guess it's going to drive it since there's three of us. I'd like to bring it back in July, but I, I really primarily to have more of the documentation and the, um, letters back and forth from, um, from MAC and F, I'd even prefer FAA. And I don't know if you, I guess I need some, uh, legal advice or do, is it really irrelevant to us if we have no, um, say, to say no or no basis to, to really turn this down? Is it relevant to hear from, uh, the airport? But I'd be much more curious to really have us, have our city staff confirm with them, "Are you serious? Are you really, okay, putting homes here?" I'd like to hear that back, have our staff, uh, connect that way. Um, and then, and then really to get our maps all lined up and, because we've got three different, if I'm reading this right, we've got a cul-de-sac and a couple of them, we've got the road turning in a certain pla, and just get all that lined up for July and, and really maybe give us, uh, since, maybe I can do some homework too. I'd like to call, we have a Eden Prairie, um, representative on the Metropolitan Airport Commission, I'd like to call Rick King myself. Um, I'd just like to learn a little bit more, um, get brought up to speed, um, and, and maybe even review some of our, um, two thousand and one documents just to make sure that I'm understanding that, that this is appropriate. And one more thing I'd like to find out is where has this come up in the past? Where have we approved a project like this that had a Zone A touching into it, I think? Um, and then this much Zone B? And if you say, "Hey, here it is, six other times around, you're forgetting," fine, but I, I don't remember that and I'd like to know that before the July meeting, um, before I would vote for this.
Do you want Eden Prairie examples or any of the airports?
That's interesting, but mainly Eden Prairie examples, yeah.
Do you think anything would change? I mean, could we?
Yeah, if I know that I've approved this before and this is nothing new, but if this is the very first time, I'd like to find out more. Then I'd like to chat with MAC and then I'd like to learn, are, are you all interested? I mean, maybe they say right now they haven't signed on to enforcing this. Maybe this brings to them the case of maybe you need to. Maybe you all need to start looking at enforcing your Zone A and your Zone B and you should have stepped up to the plate on this one. I'd like to know more about that.
Uh, Mr. Rosso, are we able to do a second, a first and second reading in July on this? To still expedite things and move things along for the developer?
Yes, a first and second reading requires a unanimous vote, uh, at the time of the first and second reading as opposed to a majority.
So theoretically, we can end up not postponing this at all, really? Because they have to wait for the second reading anyway?
Or if we did a first reading tonight, we would still be pending on the second reading.
Right, we could do that too. Yes, did you wish to say something else?
Um, yes, if, if I may. Um, you know, I, I, we, we've been working with a property owner for quite some time, since, uh, last year on this assemblage. And, you know, when we first came in and met with city staff on August third last year, uh, we were asked to add the Fraser parcel to the west as to not land lock that parcel. So we invested a lot of time with the Fraser group, put that under contract, and continued to move forward. Uh, we've been at this a very long time and the property owners have been very, very patient with everything that's occurred. There's been a lot of, uh, back and forth, part of the reason, the plans, uh, that you referenced earlier, um, you know, we've done every right-in, right-out opportunity on the Pioneer Trail. We spearheaded the conversations with the county. You know, after the planning commission meeting, we set up the, we set up the meeting with the county. City staff was informed of when that meeting was to occur and, uh, we were the driver. Nobody from city staff attended that meeting, which was a little bit disheartening, not only for us as a developer, but frankly, Hennepin County was surprised as well that nobody showed up to that meeting. You know, we've dotted our I's, crossed our T's as it relates to MAC. The letter was sent to the city on March third to Julie, from MAC. We've received our FAA notification, um, and, you know, before the planning commission meeting, uh, where we had a recommendation for continuance, um, sat down with Mr. Getcho and Ms. Jeremiah, um, and, you know, explained some of the hurdles that we've gone through, some of the frustrations we've gone through, um, as a resident of Eden Prairie. Didn't feel as though everything was treated very fairly. As a developer of a lot of communities in Eden Prairie in the past, um, you know, this was very similar to the last project I did in Eden Prairie, uh, in terms of continuance and dragging things out. So, I would ask, you know, if we can consider to do the first reading tonight and the second reading in July, um, to keep our obligations that we've made to the family, um, that would be what I would ask tonight.
Well, thank you, and we would like to keep this moving and I'm, um, I hope you understand that this is all a process that you have been going through and even tonight is considered part of that process. We are not meant here as councilmembers to just rubber stamp something that's come up from staff and planning. So questions still arise at this level, questions might arise at a public hearing that still have to be worked on. So, we will attempt to do what we can to get this moving forward, but realizing that this is part of the process. We're not trying to set up roadblocks, we're trying to make sure that we have the best community we can have and that we have happy homeowners that move into these homes.
Sure.
And that we are doing everything legal to protect, uh, the city. So, that's where we're coming from, just so you know. Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the Council on Prairie Enclave? Prairie View Enclave, I'm sorry. If you'd give your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, John Fedora, ninety-eight twenty Tree Farm Road. Just a couple of things. One is that, you know, from the neighborhood and, and some of our, uh, discussions previous, the right turn in, right turn out, um, I'm a little confused. We think that's kind of like mandatory to have that second entrance in. And I'm just a little confused on, there's talk about it being temporary, you know, a temporary construction, but what does temporary mean? Is it a permanent, uh, right-in, right-out or just for construction?
I think right-in, right-out was on, oh, Mr. Ellis, yeah, you answer it.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, City Council, so when we, when we talk temporary, um, there's really two issues. We would like to see, uh, at a minimum, there's a temporary construction access for the site gradient and home building that would happen. But I think really the discussion is leaning towards, uh, what we'll call a temporary access until, directly to Pioneer Trail, until the MAC development happens, then that connection would be diverted to that new road which would have permanent access onto Pioneer Trail. So, uh, temporary in so much as wait until, uh, we see what happens with the MAC property, but there would be that second connection whether we're being proposed now or with the MAC property development, uh, long into the future.
Okay. And then, you know, on that note, it's a little disconcerting that two years ago, we had this huge discussion about parcel six and now your conversations are like it's going to happen. And that's a little disconcerting because the MAC has taken it off the table and there was a lot of, uh, from the council and from the, the property owners, a lot of pushback on that whole idea of parcel six. And so I, I, I'm, you know, really concerned about the terminology that's being used here saying, "When the MAC develops it," um, because that, you know, that's off the table from my understanding.
Yeah, can I clarify? I, I think, um, when could be twenty years, when could be possibly never. I think what you're referring to and refreshing the council's memory is you, uh, created zoning classifications for MAC, uh, with the exception of the one site Mr. Fedora is, uh, referring to. You did not rezone that site as airport. I don't remember if it was airport office or what it was at that time.
Airport office.
Airport office. And you had said to MAC at that time that you would, uh, you would consider a rezoning at such time that they ever bring forward a proposal. The other areas you did rezone, so it, so we're not, I just want to be clarifying staff's behalf as we're not assuming it's going to happen.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's a better description. And then, you know, just related to the safety zones is, you know, again, when is a safety zone no longer a safety zone? You know, at what point, when you fill it up with houses, is it no longer a safety zone? And, you know, parcel six, again, going to the someday, maybe never, um, that's definitely in Safety Zone B as well. So again, you know, it's to protect the people on the ground so that, you know, God forbid, an airplane needs to come down, it can miss structures. And again, when you fill up the safety zone with structures, it kind of, kind of takes away from being a safety zone. So just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Fedora. Anybody else that wants to address the council?
Yes, I'm Patrick Prom, I live at one-two-six-six-one Pioneer Trail. I think everybody knows where the steel tractor is. But anyhow, my driveway, I've been there for thirty-eight years, thirty-nine years, and I share the end of the driveway. It looks like me, I gotta have a three-foot driveway going to my backyard. I gotta get in and out with a truck and a trailer all the time. So I wonder if that line can be varied, if I can bargain with the D, with the developer to get a little wider driveway going into my property, the back driveway. The way it is, when I turn up Pioneer Trail, I got about a hundred-and-ten degree corner. I have to slow down, almost stop, because otherwise I'll fly airborne if I take that. And then I gotta get to the back driveway. And I can't get there if they're by my property line without taking trees and lilacs, whole row out.
Okay, so the current, your current driveway requires you to almost come to a complete stop in order to turn in?
It's right here, it's, it's, it's this one right here. I don't want to have to go on Seariff Road because that'll be too hard to get in and out on my driveway.
So technically you, is it a legal easement or do you just use the current driveway to the west to get to the back driveway? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I go out to the gravel roads.
Right, but that, and then technically...
I've been sharing with Maudine for thirty-eight years, thirty-nine years. And according to the stakes out there, it would, if they, I got about three foot of property on that road and I can't get a car and a trailer, truck and a trailer through there. I'd have to move all my trees and my lilacs. That's kind of my dead buffer zone.
Okay.
So, is, is staff, is that, is his driveway on, on his property or is it on this property?
Mr. Peterson maybe can address it.
Cement apron is double wide.
The what?
The cement apron coming off the Pioneer Trail, double wide, but I don't need all of that, but then it goes to gravel road. When they developed that curve in the road or four lanes, they moved that whole driveway toward me because there was a big tree there and they moved the power lines. Now, the power lines are kind of restricted too, because they'll probably go away because I have underground, well, uh...
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Yeah, we invested a lot of time with Mr. Prom out on his property, um, and, and walked the driveway. The driveway he's referring to is, um, this driveway along this property line that comes back and, and comes in here. When we were out... When we were out there with Mr. Prom, you know, he, he has a garden area, trees, lilac bushes in this area, right here.
Yeah.
And what we discussed with him, there is no permanent easement for him today. What we discussed with him is relocating that driveway along this power pole and encroaching onto this lot, which would be there, granting him an easement until such time as his property develops and connecting it to this piece. There was one tree that we would have to remove as part of that relocation to smooth this curve out. And then we were going to pave that section of his driveway as well as up here that is currently not paved, so.
Yeah, there has to be at least a 12-foot driveway.
Sure.
To make that corner.
Right.
But I don't want to have to move the whole trees, all the lilacs.
Yeah, no, it's just like we talked when we were out there and we walked.
Yeah, but.
Sounds like this will work.
According to the stakes, they've only given me about three-foot driveway.
Well, that's all we're hearing from Mr. Peterson.
I have to have something re-staked out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to put it in the development agreement, we'll give him a 12-foot paved driveway and an easement. I'm fine with that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Does that satisfy your need, does that satisfy your needs and requirements then?
Yeah, I want to see something staked out, something on paper.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Counsel?
Well, I would move to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
My preference would be to continue for our own, for my own personal education, but I would expect maybe the rest of the council would benefit as well.
I guess I'm, I'm of the mind that we could, we could approve first reading and then do all of that due diligence and, and other studies between now and the July meeting and then rather, I, I don't like doing, you know, double readings on the same night unless we really have to, two readings on the, you know, first and second reading on the same night. So I'd, I'd prefer that we, you know, have it the normal process. I think that still gives us the flexibility and, and time we need to do any further research to make any, you know, any further changes if necessary between first and second reading.
I, I'd kind of prefer that, too, Ron. I don't like doing first and second readings on the same night, especially on a development project. So if we could do, do the first reading tonight and incorporate conditions, as is our fourth bullet point, and we would incorporate the condition that this driveway is a 16-foot driveway, 16, 12-foot driveway, that we get further information from MAC according to the stuff that you wanted. And what else, sir?
Let me just ask a question here. Mr. Getcho, if I voted this down tonight, there's three of us, that's two, one, what does that do? What does that mean?
I believe you would need, the question that Councilmember Case has, maybe it's for Mr. Russell, if the pass is two to one, does it pass? Because you have three, you have a quorum of three, but you need three votes of the five for this to pass first reading. And while you're, while you're thinking about this, one comment I will make is you're, you're approving first reading of an ordinance for a zoning change from rural to R113.5. We would ask that you wait until the second reading to do the adoption of the preliminary plat, because that is, that's a one-time approval. So we would ask that you wait on the plat. So that gives you a little bit more protection as well as a council, but you can do a simple majority approval of the, the plat at the July meeting and the second reading of the ordinance. As to Councilmember Case voting no tonight, I'll have Mr. Russell answer that.
You have a quorum and a majority of the quorum on this type of item approves the item. If it was a comprehensive guide plan change, that requires basically a four-fifths vote of the entire council. If it was a different type of zoning change that this is not, it would require a larger vote of the entire council, so.
So moving from rural to whatever, to zoning.
Residential is, does, is, does not require.
Requires supermajority.
Does not require a supermajority.
So you could pass it anyways. I like what Mr. Getcho just said because here's the reason I would tonight vote against it under the circumstances if we had to replat. I understand the developer has a map, a very tiny map, almost hand drawn from MAC that shows it's okay. And I understand they have a statement from MAC saying that we're okay with nothing taller than 35 feet. That's not answering my question. We have a map that's in our packet that shows Zone A cutting the house on Lot 15 in half. Illegal to be there. So I would vote against the plating tonight based on the materials that we have in our packet. But from what Mr. Getcho just said, I'm fine passing the zoning district change tonight and then coming back at the July meeting and really getting a lot more information and scrutinizing this plat and getting information from the Metropolitan Airport Commission as well and giving us a chance, I think, to re-educate ourself on our Zone A, Zone B and, and some of the history that we've approved in the past and what we haven't approved. So I want to learn a lot more about that. So I, I can make, or you go ahead, you go ahead, Brad.
I'll, I'll make the motion. I would move that we approve the first reading of the ordinance for a zoning district change from rural to R113.5 zoning district on 10.71 acres.
Second.
Do we want to direct staff and have conditions? I think we do.
Well, all the conversation was heard, but so we certainly want information, clarity within our packet and any documentation that developer can give us. And we absolutely want clarification on the maps on the Zone A where that, if that truly cuts into Lot 15. And I think, I would like to see our staff contact directly MAC, MAC and get a map from them showing that this is not impacted. And then, what else, anything else that we?
Well, does the direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council condition, is that, is that tied to the plat or is that tied to the zoning district change or both?
That's tied to both because the development agreement will address both. I'd say that if, that you could consider as a condition that the staff brings back to you information sufficient for the council to determine that the proposal is appropriately under legal standards.
You kind of always word things legally a little bit better. I'm impressed, so thank you.
So, so is part of, I mean, I started, I didn't quite finish the motion and then it was approved, so.
Oh, I second your pass, go ahead.
So I.
You draw your second.
So, so let's, so let me read it, I'll read it from, from scratch again, just to be, to be clear.
Sounds good.
So the motion is to approve first reading of the ordinance for a zoning district change from rural to R113.5 zoning district on 10.71 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is that adequate, Mr. Russell?
Does that include what I just recommended as a potential?
Yes.
Okay. That's sufficient.
Okay. Is there a second?
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll see you next month, then. Thank you. The next item for public hearing is a resolution approving the issuance by the City of Greenwood, Minnesota of charter school lease revenue bonds. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. You have had before you in the past projects where the city has done conduit financing for nonprofit or other governmental, some private development in the past where the city's able to put their full faith and credit, but no exposure or risk behind another entity bonding for a project. In this case, that, that would not be the City of Eden Prairie, it's the City of Greenwood, Minnesota. So we've also had a couple cases where any city in the state of Minnesota could provide that conduit financing, but the city that the project would occur in needs to acquiesce to that occurring. And what we're talking about here is the, the current charter school that is at 7255 Flying Cloud Drive Eagle Ridge, they're relocating to Minnetonka, larger space, I believe. And the Hopkins Main Street School of Performing Arts, that's a charter school in downtown Hopkins, is proposing to relocate to this facility and they are working with the City of Greenwood to issue bonds to do improvements to the property that allow their school to then be located to this facility in the Golden Triangle in Eden Prairie. So you need to host a public hearing and then you're adopting a resolution approving the issuance for the City of Greenwood for these conduit financing lease revenue bonds. I believe representatives with that project are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have and staff can do that as well.
Okay, Counsel, any questions for Mr. Getcho? Any questions for the proponents?
Well, I guess, I mean, the only thing I would say is just maybe for clarity for people, you know, watching at home and, and viewing this is, is that this is in no way impacting the city's finances, that this is completely outside of the city's finance.
Correct.
Right.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue?
See, and I would move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the issuance by the City of Greenwood, Minnesota of charter school lease revenue bond Series 2016A and 2000, and Series 2016B Main Street School of Performing Arts project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Congratulations. Welcome. Happy to have you in Eden Prairie.
I would move approval of the payment of claims.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens?
Aye. Next item is appointments for students on our commissions. We have quite a number. Mr. Aho, do you want to start with the first appointment?
Certainly. So I would move to appoint to the Conservation Commission Emily Cleveland, Zoe Petit, Anika Quam, and Hayden Bun.
I would move to appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Connor Peszek, Ben Shepherd, and James Hilton.
Connor was in my class years ago. I would move to appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Carolyn Mason, Alyssa Miners, Taylor Wolf, and Sienna Gambino.
And I would move to appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Nia Colbrook, Asia Galley, Ashwin Sente Kumar, Adrian Retzloff, Angela Lynn, and Carter Rizlove.
And finally, I would move to appoint to the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Commission William Hemmer, Philip Kuhn, Connor Redding, Stephen Wink, and Kirsten Johnson.
Aye. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'd like to welcome all those student commissioners to those commissions. We look forward to, to you guys having a great year with our city. Next is report of the city manager, Mr. Getcho.
Mayor, thank you. Quick item, before I do that, too, I want to mention with the students on commissions, too, this was a, a record year for applications and we were able to find a, a place for everybody. It looks as if, you know, a few of these commissions might have to meet in a bigger room with some of the students that we've added, but with almost each student, we were able to, to place them with their first choice. There were a few that with heritage preservation, I don't think anyone had them as their first choice, but they were the second choices of all the people that are on there, but everyone else was able to make their first choice. So I think it's one of those programs where you hear our commission chairs, staff liaisons not only want to see, welcome the students on the commissions, but they want to see them be involved, they want to see them participate and be active, so we're looking forward to that. So thank you, I just wanted to add that. Yeah, one quick item, Mayor and Counsel, I just want to mention that at the end of this month, our illustrious police chief will be retiring at the end of June and this would be the last meeting that, that he would be a part of this evening. And so I just want to say, say a few words, too, to just kind of mention that from my perspective. So I, so it, it's hard to believe, he's out in the audience here, if you look at him, that there's someone who started as a police officer back in May of 1985. You know, at that time, I was finishing my, my freshman year of high school and it's hard to believe that he was ready to venture on to the, to the role of policing, but for those 32 years, Rob Reynolds, you know, rose through the ranks as patrol officer, school resource officer, a corporal, a sergeant, a lieutenant, and then a deputy chief, and he became chief in, in 2007. So for the past nine years, he's, he's served our city as the police chief of Eden Prairie. I've worked with him for, for five of those years and I know in that time, in the police department, he'll say that at the time he came and, and councilmembers that have, have served know that we were a fast-growing community and that's the same thing with our police department, kind of coming on in the 80s and 90s and being a part of a, a fast-growing city, you know, from a staff and from a development perspective that you're able to, to be a part of shaping a department and, and having a lot of activity within the department. And our chief has been someone who, you know, has sponsored and promoted a lot of innovation, a lot of technology. We're, we're a city that's known for having some of the best crime analytics, thanks to our chief in command staff. So I just want to say, he's a great leader who's led a great department and from perspective as a city manager, he will be missed, but we appreciate your service to the city, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you want to say anything?
No, he doesn't.
Did he have hair back then?
Speech, speech, come on.
Do you want to say something?
Rob, come on, it's your last meeting.
Your honor, members of the council, thank you very much. I didn't know this was coming. I do have something planned in a couple of weeks, which I'll have something a little more organized to say, I guess.
Okay.
You know, had I known, I would have done something with my hair. But no, it's, it's, when, when talking with some of the communications staff, I think one of the things that we stress, the deputy chief and I sit down with everyone that comes on to the department and we talk to them about how important it is that, you know, there are a lot of great police departments, but they're different, they're great for different reasons. And we talk to them about how important it is that you match the organization with what you want out of your career. And I was fortunate and I think that I just kind of fell into this. I fell into the perfect spot for me. I, I was very proud of the organization, as I'm sure you are when you go out. You're very happy and proud to say you're from Eden Prairie and proud of the accomplishments of, of this organization. And I say that's not only true for the, for the police department, but for the city as a whole. And I consider, like I said, consider myself fortunate every day to, to have landed here and to have the opportunity that the council and the community has given me personally and our organization. So for that, thanks, and we'll have more of, more of that to say on the 29th.
Thank you. Thank you for those years with us. You've done a great job.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
Appreciate it. Is there any other business to bring before the council? Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.